女士们，先生们， 一个摩尔族老人，到 podium 上来，
他们来自不同的社会， 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 我在这里很高兴见到你。
所以，我们的人， 他们对我说， 但是，我们的人， 我们的仪式， 当创造者造出人类时， 他取了从地球上的一片叶子， 然后他塑造了人类。他给了我们他的灵魂和火， 他把他的血融入了我们， 他给了我们他的呼吸。他拿起了一片叶子， 我要一直爱她，照顾她， 所以这是我们向母亲， 我们向母亲， 我们向母亲， 你们来到这里， 你们的心里有你们来到这里 谈论与这片土地的关系， 我们的母亲， 以及她身体上的所有东西， 一起维持着我们的母亲的性命。我感谢你们的工作。他经常来找我， 我很高兴见到他。我们一样， 所以我们向我们的母亲， 我们的母亲， 我们向她致以感谢， 因为她所做的工作。每一天，她都不会倒退她的力量。我们向她， 我们向我们的母亲， 她穿着一件美丽的绸缎衫， 就像我妻子现在穿的那样。各种草种， 有些是食物， 有些是 shelter。如果你在任何地方看一眼 ，你会看到这世界上的绿植， 它会打动你的心。生命的一切都来自于根， 甚至对于你来说， 你的根源是你的文化， 你的身份， 你来自的地方， 你说话的语言， 一切，你唱的歌曲， 这就是你成为你自己的原因， 让你活下来。而且这一切都在这里， 都含有药物。所以我们感谢药物。不同的思维方式， 找到一条不同的道路， 让我们可以照顾我们的母亲。最后，我们转向我们的祖父， 我们的祖父， 他与你们一起工作， 他加热和温暖这片土地。在夜晚，当母亲的月亮 覆盖在我们的头上时， 所有活着的东西都会自我 rejuvenate， 就不会有更多孩子出生， 那么我们会在什么世界生活？ 但是我们的母亲很关心我们， 她看着我们， 生活继续。最后，我们转向星星， 我们真的不认识它们， 就像我们以前一样。我们的人说， 我们是从天空中来的， 从星星中来的。所以我们向星星致敬， 那些在夜晚中美丽的时候照亮天空的星星。我们对他们感谢， 他们所做的所有。最后，我们转向创造者， 我们向创造者致以感谢， 让我们有机会来到这里。在我们的教义中， 所有人类， 一切都是这个世界的一部分。我说给人们听， 我说， 在这个世界上， 我们是虫子。我们只是这片土地的一部分， 我们必须再次找到我们的位置， 以便我们可以在自然循环中工作。所以我们向创造者致以感谢， 让我们有机会来到这里。我会告诉你， 你知道， 对于我们来说， 当我谈论死亡， 当我谈论痛苦， 当有人躺在桌子上， 而我必须与他们交谈， 当他们离开这片土地时。我说给他们， 我说， 为了所有活着的人， 创造者有一个钉子， 当那个时间结束时， 所以，我们每天， 每天早上睁开眼睛， 就像你做了那样， 吸一口气， 我们应该感谢创造者， 让我们又一天能够活着。当我们走在这片土地上， 因为我们在这里， 我们要做什么， 来照顾我们的母亲？ 记住，这片土地是我们的母亲， 就像你的母亲生下你， 她生下了我们。所以我们应该轻柔地走在他身体上。他说， 感谢土地的承认。没有人拥有这片土地。但是，我们的人， 我们被赋予了责任， 我们说， 当你偶尔出去， 把你的手放在土地上， 脱掉鞋子， 在草地上走， 对土地说：“我的母亲， 我关心你。” 她会听你的言语。她需要听到这一点更多。人们需要再次看土地， 作为我们的母亲， 她需要感受到我们的爱。所以这是我将做的事。但永远在你们面前， 是创造者。这个生命循环是创造者。我们不看创造者 为某个地方， 某个皇冠， 某个地方而存在。创造者在空气中， 你呼吸。创造者在太阳上。创造者在月亮上。创造者在你吃的食物上。所以，现在我们打开这个集合， 我们希望你们有最好的话语， 最好的心灵， 为未来的 generations 和我们的。谢谢大家。感谢你们的聆听。
我向所有的 indigenous 人民参加这次会议表示敬意。
尊敬的大家早上好。此景， 各缔约方于 2022年12月目前已经有 14 个缔约方向公约秘书处 会议分享的多边机制， 这是 COP15 给我们的一项使命。第五次缔约方大会 COP15 决定建立为取得突破奠定了基础。第 15-9 号决定明确提出 COP15 还设立了一个遗传资源数字序列信息使用会议分享不限名额特设工作组。DSI 多边机制和全球基金昆蒙框架是 2022 年至 2030 年期间是我们为到 2030 年停止和扭转生物多样性丧失到2050 年实现人与自然和谐共处愿景而共同绘制的蓝图。框架的长期目标 C 和行动计划 13 也涉及了 DSI 的议题。因此，在完成一周的谈判后， 不仅关乎到公约下 DSI 的规范和监管， 自去年 11 月在日内瓦举行的不限名额 我们不断取得进展， 以其为 COP16 取得突破铺平道路。对资金的捐款， 对基金的支出， 非货币利益共享， 几个月前，在内罗毕举行的 SBI4 期间， 从我了解的情况来看， 在内罗毕， 积极开展了工作， 由于这些值得称道的努力， 在我们前进的过程中， 必须问自己一个问题： 如何确保在 DSI 方面取得的进展 既能促进生物多样性的保护， 我相信第 15-9 号决定为我们指明了正确的方向， 完成这项工作取决于我们。DSI 无疑是一个前沿问题。从昆明到蒙特利尔， 谢谢大家。
执行委员会的执行秘书长， 办公室秘书， 请发表发言。请坐。
尊敬的各位代表， 尊敬的美好的蒙特利尔市。我可以先说一个承诺吗？ 你们不会有时间享受这座城市。我们有着艰巨的任务等着我们。但更严重的是， 我们所有人都在这里， 为《开放工作小组》对我来说， 我想大家都知道， 与 CBD 交易的首次正式接触。所以我可以个人声明 说， 我拥有这个职位是如此的荣誉， 这是我荣幸的事。这是一个巨大的责任。我和我的同事们， 和副部长们， 我们会密切合作， 与当前的总统， incoming 的总统， 和所有的人， 当然， 与机构， 推进 CBD 目标和我们的联合 framework， 昆蒙-蒙特利尔全球 biodiversity framework， 我们在这里已经签了字， 两年多前。从那时起， 在数字 sequence 信息方面， 很多事情发生了。它聚集了科学的研究和 normative 工作， 和当然， 尽管这个 intersection 很复杂， 自从 COP15 开始， 很多挑战已经被解决。创新是必须的， 因此，我们很高兴看到 indigenous 人民的全方面的参与， 我想特别感谢老首相， 提醒我们为什么在这里， 以及这是怎么回事。此外， 对于 indigenous 人民， 当地的社区， 青年， academia， private sector 和其他利益， 你们都在参与。你们把你们的声音带到桌子上了。当然，我想加入我们的总统， 李永宁， 执行委员会的副部长， 以及所有内部的成员， 所以，谢谢。帕索恩维尔， 我现在看不到你， 但我知道你在这里， 我之前见过你。谢谢你为国际工作 提供助力， 在你的国家中， 作为资深公务员， 为你服务。我们的副部长团队， 他们的工作是 特别提到的， 当然，大卫·库珀， 不需要自我介绍的， 执行部副部长， 他真的起到了重要作用， 所以， 大卫， 谢谢你所做的伟大的工作， 你经过的额外路程， 你将会继续走下去， 以便我们能在 COP16 中履行我们从 COP15 时承诺的誓言， 我们将多条网络系统， 所以，各位参与者， 我们走了很长的路。如果我们稍等片刻， 想一想， 我们所取得的成果， 特别是过去一个月， COP15 已经建立了包括 COP fifteen has established a groundbreaking multilateral mechanism for benefit sharing from the use of DSI and genetic resources, including a global fund. And the COP fifteen decision is nothing else or was nothing else but a watershed moment. Consensus among all parties that benefits from the use of DSI on genetic resources should be shared fairly and equitably. That decision, that momentous decision. We think we are witnessing really the emergence of a game changer here. The multilateral mechanism is expected to provide policy guidance on the fair and equitable sharing, benefit sharing from the use of digital sequence information on genetic resources. It is also expected to generate non-monetary benefits that can help to bridge the scientific, technical and technological gaps in the way DSI on genetic resources is accessed and used around the world. It is also expected to provide capacity building and development and technology transfer where they are needed to access. It is expected to mobilize new streams of additional funding for biodiversity conversation, conservation, obviously, conservation. It did sound strange, but I was going to add, this is so sorely needed. I think we all know that. So we have come a long way. So let's go the extra mile now. Our journey started in Cancun. It took us to Egypt where the issue of DSI was still being explored. You all collectively overcame the restrictions on intergovernmental work during COVID nineteen pandemic. You just continued working through a series of webinars that paved the way for the COP fifteen decision that established a multilateral mechanism. And then, of course, we had the first in-person meeting of the ATOC Open-Ended Working Group in November twenty twenty three in Geneva. And now we're here once again in Montreal, hoping that the Montreal spirit will bring us to the finishing line. And let's just remember, we owe the progress that we've accomplished thus far to a number of things. Since COP fifteen, all of you have submitted your input, you have shared views, lessons learned from similar processes and mechanisms and pointed to areas where further investigations were needed. And you have all considered lessons learned from other international funding mechanisms and the synthesis of views and issues that parties at COP fifteen identified as needing further consideration. And since the beginning of this year, many of you additionally have participated in monthly meetings of the informal advisory group to advance the work as per the mandate from the first meeting. And the co-chairs of the Committee of the Hall and the Secretariat have been working hard to develop options that you can consider. So in this decisive round of negotiations, we count, we believe we can continue to count on your full and constructive engagement in the spirit of goodwill and compromise. So mixing matters a little bit, we talked about intersection at the beginning and now we're on a ship, but aboard the ship, land is actually inside. Together, we're really moving closer to the operationalization of a cost-effective, efficient and simple multilateral mechanism on benefit sharing from the use of DSI on the genetic resources. And I was delighted to hear also our president, Mr. Liuning, shares optimistic take on where these negotiations are headed. So with this optimism, let us carry this, let us carry it forward. We believe we are on the cusp of a historic breakthrough at the forthcoming COP sixteen of the CBD in just a couple of months. And there's nothing else but for us to demonstrate how environmental multilateralism can deliver for people and nature. So the expectations are certainly high. Your responsibility is high. I think your motivation is high. So let me stop talking finally and just wish all of us and specifically you a productive week ahead. Thank you so much.
Stokma, for your introductory remarks, allow me to express my sincere gratitude and extend my congratulations to you and the entire Secretariat team for your hard work in preparing for this meeting. Distinguished delegates, I will now ask the Secretariat to provide information on the use of the megaphones as well as other logistic arrangements before we conclude Agenda Item One. Secretariat, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning to all of you distinguished delegates. It is indeed a pleasure to see you all again. First of all, please note that this meeting is being held in person only. There is no online participation available. Let me now begin with information on how to use the microphones. If you wish to request the floor, please press the microphone button only once and the microphone light will turn green. We will be notified of your request. Please note that pressing the button twice will cancel the request to speak. When the chair invites you to speak, the technician will turn on your microphone. There is nothing more for you to do. When your microphone light becomes red, please then start speaking. As you can see, mine is red and I am speaking. When speaking, please remember to remove your earphones and keep them away from your microphones. Speak close to the microphone slowly and clearly at dictation speed so that interpreters can provide a clear translation for everyone in the room. It is important that all delegates fully understand your intervention. Delegates from intergovernmental organizations, indigenous people and local communities, NGOs and other groups such as women, youth, academia or business who request the floor may be identified only by a number and not their organization name. When you thus are given the floor, please identify your organization before commencing your intervention. After specific proposals are made by non-parties or organizations, we will give a chance for parties who may wish to support them to raise their flags. Delegates are kindly requested to keep within the assigned time when taking the floor and to speak at dictation speed to facilitate the work of the interpreters. That is very important. Secondly, regarding statements, delegates are requested to upload their written statements using the online application on the meeting page. In case of any difficulty in using the online system, delegates may send the statement by email to statements@cbd.in t. It greatly facilitates the work of the interpreters if you upload your statements prior to delivery. However, they will be posted on the website only after delivery. Statements must be submitted within one hour after the closure of the session in which the agenda item was considered. In your submission, please make sure to include the name of your country or organization and the agenda item on the first page of the document that is uploaded. Instructions in this regard were included in your priority pass email along with your dedicated link which leads you directly to the upload page. Next, regarding site events, site events will take place at one fifteen P M, Monday to Thursday, and six fifteen P M on Tuesday and Wednesday evening. Please do consult the online schedule on the meeting page as well as the monitors for the event title, location and time. We would now like to draw attention to the mobile application, CBD Events App, which is free of charge for both Android and iPhone and can be downloaded from the meeting website under the Information for Participants menu. All information on sessions and site events will be available on the app and updated regularly. We encourage you to use it. Finally, I would like to share important information about our meeting venues for this week. There are two venues. The plenary and committee of the hall will take place here at the International Civil Aviation Organization ICAO Building. This venue's X-ray and conference entrance is operational daily from seven thirty A M until seven thirty P M. These hours will be extended in case of an evening session at the ICAO Building. There is a bistro on the first floor which will serve sandwiches and coffee from eight A M until five P M. Contact groups and possible friends of the chair will take place at the EVO Building next door at seven 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 Robert Borosa Boulevard in the Regent's Meeting Room. Again, it would all the contact groups and possible friends of the chair will take place at the EVO Building next door at seven hundred and seventy seven Robert Borosa Boulevard in the Regent's Meeting Room. The EVO Building is a tall brown glass building just down the hill from this one. The Regent's Meeting Room is two floors down from the entrance area. Secretariat staff will be there to guide you should you not be able to find it. During contact group sessions at the EVO Building, we kindly request that you take all your belongings with you at the end of the various sessions. We look forward to your kind cooperation and thank you, Chair. Over to you.
We will begin. Action. We will begin this item with the election of the reporters. The working group elected Ms. Angela Lozan of the Mordova to serve as a reporter for the first meeting of the working group. And I propose that she also be elected to serve at the president meeting. Is there any objection to the proposed reporter for this meeting? So I see no objections. I congratulate Mr. Lozan on her election as a reporter and invite her to come to take her seat at the podium. Thank you all. This brings us to the adoption of the agenda and the organization of work. The Executive Secretary, in consultation with the Bureau and in accordance with rules eight and nine of the rules of procedures, prepared a provisional agenda for this second meeting of the working group. The provisional agenda of the working group is contained in document WG DSI slash two slash one and notations to the provisions agenda are contained in document WG DSI slash two slash one slash A D D dot one. I first submit the prevention agenda for adoption. I propose that prevention agenda be adopted as the agenda for this meeting. Is there any intervention? I see none, no objections. So the agenda is adopted? Regarding the organization of work, the Executive Secretary, in consultation with the Bureau, proposed the allocation of tasks for the meeting as described in Annex One of the annotated agenda contained in document WG DSI slash two slash one slash A D D dot one. During this meeting, we have only one substantive agenda item. The working group is expected to conduct its work in plenary session with the support of a committee of the hall and the contact groups as needed. Following following the approach from the first meeting of the working group in Geneva, I propose that we establish a committee of the hall to consider Agenda Item Three, our substantive agenda item. Interpretation in the sixth official language of the United Nations will be provided in plenary sessions and sessions of the committee of the hall. With this explanation, I submission the organization of work for approval. I see no objections. So the organization of work is approved. As decided in the first meeting of the working group, Ms. Mupasto Kalamamba of Malawi and Ms. William Lockhart of the United Kingdom of Great Britain and Northern Ireland continue their roles as co-chairs for the committee of the hall. Distinguished delegates, this brings us to the end of Agenda Item Two and the plenary session for this meeting. I will now adjourn the plenary and invite Ms. Kalamba and Mr. Lockhart to come to the podium to resume their work as co-chair for the committee of the hall. At its juncture, let me reiterate my hope that a spirit of compromise and goodwill will prevail throughout your discussions and that you find common understanding even on issues where divergences of views and interests may exist. I'm sure that with collective wisdom and experience in this room, this working group will be able to make good progress, noting the time available for us and the need to send a clear and focused recommendation to COP sixteen to be considered in less than two months from now. We will now take a short break to rearrange the podium. I would kindly ask you to remain seated. We will resume in a few minutes. The plenary session is adjourned. I thank you. Merci beaucoup.
Please take your seats, we'll start in a minute. Please take your seats, we'll start in a minute. Thank you. All right, good morning, once again distinguished delegates. We'll now begin our session of the Committee of the Hall as was announced by the presidency. And we just want to take this opportunity to say thank you to the Mr. President and thank you to the Executive Secretary for opening the meeting. And allow us once more as co-chairs to thank you warmly, Mr. President, for the trust and confidence that you have shown us by electing us to serve as co-chairs of the Committee of the Hall. It is a tremendous honor and privilege to serve you all in this capacity. Delegates are following our helpful discussions at the first working group in Geneva. You gave us a mandate to conduct a range of intercessional work. We would also therefore like to take this opportunity to thank you wholeheartedly for the efficient and cooperative manner in which you have assisted us as co-chairs to carry out this mandate. Would like to thank the secretariat who supported us throughout the intercessional period, the members of the informal advisory group who bared awkward time zones to be able to participate in the work, and also those who attended the DSI information session in Nairobi, as well as the co-chairs of other ongoing processes with whom we have consulted. You have all worked immensely hard and the quality of your work and support has been unparalleled. We have benefited from the facilitation services provided by a number of international partners, most of who are also present today, and we are immensely grateful to them, along with those who are providing financial support to enable their work. Would also like to thank all the stakeholders who have consulted each other, organized their own informal meetings to foster clarity on a number of elements, and also to enhance understanding and insight on the remaining issues on DSI. Would like to especially express our gratitude to the indigenous peoples and local communities, women, youth, the industry, and the research and academia sectors. You have participated actively in our work and closely shaped our thinking. So thank you once again. The Executive Secretary and the President have reminded you again that we have a clear mandate to facilitate COP sixteen to operationalize the Matlato mechanism, including the global fund that was established at COP fifteen. On the basis of that mandate and the one given to us by you at our first meeting, we have worked hard to facilitate the meeting ahead of us this week. Would like to thank you for the loud and clear message that you also gave us as co-chairs in the informal DSI session in Nairobi, that you are all ready to move to the next stage and consider options for the Matlato mechanism and the global fund. We appreciate this vote of confidence and commitment towards a pragmatic and adaptive solution. In that spirit, therefore, we have provided you with draft elements which we will shortly consider, and we are here to listen to your reflections on this document. We hope to hear a clear positive signal of commitment, compromise, and goodwill to develop the Matlato mechanism and global fund as was requested of us by the COP. We are therefore in your hands for the deliberations. And distinguished delegates, the Committee of the Hall has been mandated to address agenda item three on further development of the Matlato mechanism for benefit sharing from the use of digital sequence information on genetic resources, including a global fund. This agenda item sits under the mandate given to the working group by decision fifteen slash nine to undertake further development of the Matlato mechanism and to make recommendations to the Conference of the Parties at its sixteenth meeting. Would also like to recall that decision fifteen slash nine on DSI, which was part of a package of decisions related to the Kunming-Montreal Global Biodiversity Framework, including the framework itself. We should recall that decision fifteen slash nine and fifteen slash seven on resource mobilization include cross-references to each other. On resource mobilization, we have regular exchanges with the co-chairs of the advisory group on resource mobilization, and the third meeting of the advisory committee will take place next week here in Montreal. The annotated agenda for this meeting is available on the CBD meetings webpages. In addition, in its recommendation twenty-six slash one, the subsidiary body on scientific, technical, and technological advice invited the working group to develop options for the indicators on the sharing of benefits from the use of digital sequence information for possible inclusion in the monitoring framework for the Kunming-Montreal Global Biodiversity Framework that was established under decision fifteen slash five. We will ensure a time is made available this week to allow that discussion to happen. We want to underline recognizing both the complexity of the issues in front of us with respect to DSI and also their interaction with other aspects of the agenda of COP sixteen, that nothing is agreed until everything is agreed. We assure that we can rely on you to engage in good faith on that basis. Distinguished delegates, we are now ready to commence with our substantive work on agenda item three. And I would like to request the secretariat to introduce the agenda item and the documentation prepared for it. Secretariat, you have the floor.
Thank you. Morning to everybody. Under agenda item three, the working group is expected to undertake further development of the multilateral mechanism for benefit sharing from the use of digital sequence information on genetic resources, including the elements identified in the annex to decision fifteen slash nine on digital sequence information on genetic resources, and to make recommendations to the Conference of the Parties at the sixteenth meeting. To assist this work, we have before you the main working document, CBD slash WGDSI slash two slash two, which contains a synthesis of information for the further development of the mechanism, as well as elements of a draft recommendation to the Conference of the Parties. The reflections of the co-chair on the possible elements identified by the working group on benefit sharing from the use of digital sequence information on genetic resources at its first meeting are made available in document CBD slash WGDSI slash two slash two slash add one. The secretariat has prepared an executive summary of the study's commission pursuant to decision fifteen slash nine, paragraph twenty A and B, which is contained in document CBD slash WGDSI slash two slash two slash add two. The full studies are available as information document CBD slash WGDSI slash two slash one. Information document CBD slash W- Information document CBD/WGDSI/2/Inf2 provides a report of the co-chairs on the outcomes of their informational intercessional work. Finally, the report of the first meeting of the working group, Document CBD/WGDSI/1/2, is published as a reference document on the meeting webpage. Thank you, Co-Chair.
Thank you very much, Secretariat, for providing an overview of these documents. Good morning, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here, very, very nice to see you. I also at this point want to thank the Secretariat for their incredibly hard work to facilitate the co-chairs in preparing the documents for this meeting along with all the other aspects of our work. We are really incredibly grateful. We want to be very clear. We have heard a range of divergent views over many months on a complex network of issues, but you asked us as co-chairs to facilitate a process and to move us forward to the best of our abilities. We've explained the rationale for the choices that we have made in the Add 1 document and we have summarized where that leads us in the 2-2 document, which contains draft elements for a decision. You will not agree with every part of our thinking. Now is the time to explain why. But remember, you're not negotiating with us, with the co-chairs. You're negotiating with each other. For every sentence which you find difficult, someone else in the room is likely to support it. So your job is to work together to find consensus among those difficult elements. Where you want to tell us now that something is problematic for you, you also need to tell us how you want to solve that problem. Time is short and we need to focus on solutions, consensus and compromise. So, we're keen to ensure that there is as much time as possible. So we will now make the floor open for interventions. You are invited, please, to make statements on the full scope of our mandate to operationalize the mechanism drawing from the document CBD Working Group DSI 2/2. Please keep your statements concise. We will be limiting interventions to six minutes for parties that are speaking on behalf of regions, three minutes for individual parties and non-party governments, three minutes for stakeholder groups and two minutes for other observers. Four minutes for stakeholder groups, I'm being corrected, I'm sorry. So I'll start the list again. We are limiting interventions to six minutes for parties speaking on behalf of regions, three minutes for individual parties and non-party governments, four minutes for stakeholder groups and two minutes for other observers. Please, as described earlier, upload the full text of your intervention in the dedicated space on the meeting website and please note that your key points should be read out in the room. Thank you. We'll now proceed to take the first round of statements, beginning in our normal fashion with statements from parties on behalf of regions. Please press the button to indicate that you would like to take the floor.
Merci Monsieur le Président. Monsieur le Président, distinguents délégués. Au nom du groupe africain, je souhaite exprimer notre sincère gratitude au gouvernement et au peuple canadien pour leur chaleureuse hospitalité. Nous remercions également le Secretariat de la CDB pour son engagement continu en faveur de la mise en œuvre de l'agenda mondial de la biodiversité. Ce forum est essentiel pour aborder la question cruciale du partage des avantages découlant de l'utilisation de l'information numérique sur le séquençage DSI des ressources génétiques. Une question d'une grande importance pour l'Afrique. Monsieur le Président, l'Afrique abrite une part significative de la biodiversité mondiale qui soutient non seulement nos écosystèmes mais aussi les moyens de subsistance de millions de nos concitoyens. La conservation et l'utilisation durable de la biodiversité ainsi que le partage juste et équitable des avantages liés aux ressources génétiques sont au cœur de notre agenda de développement. L'utilisation des DSI présente à la fois des opportunités et des défis. Bien qu'elle ouvre de nouvelles voies pour la recherche scientifique et l'innovation, elle soulève également des préoccupations concernant le partage équitable des avantages, en particulier avec les pays d'origine des ressources génétiques. Le groupe africain plaide fortement pour la mise en œuvre et la mise en place de mécanismes garantissant un partage juste et équitable des avantages découlants de l'utilisation des DSI, conformément aux principes de la Convention sur la diversité biologique et du Protocol de Nagoya. Alors que nous entamons cette phase cruciale de discussion, le groupe africain souhaite souligner les positions et propositions suivantes. Pour le mécanisme de partage des avantages juste et équitable, nous réitérons la nécessité d'un cadre international robuste et juridiquement contraignant qui assure un partage juste et équitable des avantages liés à l'utilisation des DSI, tout en respectant le droit souverain des pays sur le ressource génétique. Ce cadre doit être aligné avec le mécanisme multilatéral de partage des avantages prévu à l'article 10 du Protocol de Nagoya et répondre aux défis spécifiques posés par les DSI. Deux. Pour la contribution financière et prélèvement, le groupe africain soutient une approche globale en matière de contribution financière incluant l'introduction d'un prélèvement de 1% sur la valeur au détail des produits et services liés à la biodiversité. Nous pensons que les entreprises des secteurs bénéficiants des DSI devraient contribuer un pourcentage pour un pourcentage de leurs revenus à un fonds mondial dédié à la conservation de la biodiversité et au renforcement des capacités dans les pays en développement. Trois. Pour le partage des avantages non monautaires. Au-delà des contributions financières, nous souhaitons, nous soulignons l'importance des avantages non monautaires tels que le transfert de technologies, le partage des connaissances, le renforcement des capacités et l'accès aux résultats de la recherche. Ces avantages sont essentiels pour le renforcement des capacités des pays africains à conserver et à utiliser durablement la biodiversité. Quatre. Pour la gouvernance et la transparence, nous plaîtons pour une structure de gouvernance transparente et inclusive pour tous les mécanismes de partage des avantages établis dans le cadre de ce processus. Cela devrait inclure des lignes directrices claires pour le suivi et le rapport sur l'utilisation des DSI ainsi que pour la gestion et la distribution des fonds. Et enfin, cinq. Pour la protection des connaissances traditionnelles, le groupe africain souligne la nécessité de protéger les droits des peuples autochtones et des communautés locales, notamment en ce qui concerne les connaissances traditionnelles associées aux ressources génétiques. À cet effet, l'accès aux DSI incluant des connaissances traditionnelles doit être soumis à un consentement préalable donné en connaissance de cause et à des conditions mutuelles convenies. Enfin, le groupe africain s'engage à travailler de manière constructive, Monsieur le Président, pour parvenir à un résultat équilibré et équitable qui reflétera les intérêts et les droits de tous les acteurs. Nous sommes convaincus qu'à une volonté collective et une coopération, nous pouvons établir un cadre qui protège la biodiversité et garantit une utilisation juste et équitable, contribuant ainsi aux objectifs mondiaux de développement durable. Monsieur le Président, nous abordons ces négociations avec un esprit de partenariat et de responsabilités partagées tout en étant conscients de la nécessité de protéger la biodiversité de notre planète pour les générations actuelles et futures. Je vous remercie.
... Senegal on behalf of Africa Group, that's very helpful. Next, I'll come to Fiji and then Switzerland. Fiji, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, distinguished delegates, ladies and gentlemen. Fiji is speaking on behalf of Asia and the Pacific region. The Asia-Pacific region takes this opportunity to sincerely thank the government of Canada for the warm hospitality and the Secretariat for organizing the second meeting of the ad hoc open-ended working group on benefit sharing from the use of digital sequence information on genetic resources and all those who assisted in preparing the documents for this important meeting. The Asia-Pacific region knows the significant progress made by parties on WGDSI-1 and attaches importance on the establishment of a multilateral system that will effectively support the implementation of the Kunming-Montreal Global Biodiversity Framework. It is imperative that this system provides an equitable process for the distribution of benefits ensuring transparency while upholding the full rights of developing parties and small island developing states to access funding. Furthermore, we emphasize the importance of indigenous peoples and local communities as well as their traditional knowledge associated with genetic resources in cooperation with the multilateral system. Given that the Asia-Pacific region is rich in biodiversity and host to numerous developing countries, it is critical to incorporate specific capacity building initiatives and regional projects funded through the Global Biodiversity Framework Fund and Global Environment Facility and any other financial mechanisms. It is also important to acknowledge that all countries have reaped significant benefits from open access to data which has been foundation of scientific development and innovation and production. As we move forward with the implementation of multilateral mechanism, we believe its execution should be tailored to the unique circumstances of each country. Moreover, the operation of the multilateral system must be conducted in transparent and accountable manner. Therefore, we anticipate the swift initiation of the DSI multilateral benefit sharing mechanism and it is designed to facilitate prompt and effective action. The multilateral system should generate adequate funding in a timely manner to ensure that developing countries, in particular the LDCs and SEEDs, are able to access funding to successfully implement the objectives of the CBD and the goals and targets of the Kunming-Montreal Global Biodiversity Framework. In conclusion, the Asia-Pacific region remains committed to working collaboratively towards meaningful outcomes in benefit sharing from the use of DSI and encourage all participants to engage in constructive dialogue that advances our shared goals in biodiversity conservation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Next, I will give the floor to Switzerland followed by Cuba. Switzerland.
Is making the statement on behalf of Australia, Canada, Japan, Norway, United Kingdom, United States and Switzerland as members of the CHSCANS group. CHSCANS would like to thank the people of Canada for receiving us here in Montreal and the CBD Secretariat for organizing this meeting and for preparing the pre-sessional documents. Less than two years ago, we met here in Montreal to adopt the historic Kunming-Montreal Global Biodiversity Framework. As part of it, we established a multilateral mechanism including a global fund to share benefits from the use of DSI. At the same time, we agreed on a process to develop and operationalize this new mechanism. In the meantime, a lot of work has been done and discussions on many specific issues have advanced. It is important though to recall Decision 15/9, which contains essential elements and provides a solid basis for the development of the multilateral mechanism. In particular, the criteria contained in Paragraph 9 and 10 represent several key elements of the mechanism. We need a mechanism that is simple, practical and efficient. The mechanism must provide certainty and legal clarity for users and providers of DSI and support research and innovation, including by ensuring open access to DSI. I have lost my line. The mechanism, oh this I have already. To DSI in public databases, this is the word that I was looking for. So databases should not get lost. Moreover, the mechanism must be compatible with international legal obligations and must be mutually supportive of other international access and benefit sharing instruments. And finally, it must be ensured that the benefit arising from the use of DSI support conservation and sustainable use of biological diversity and, inter alia and where applicable, benefit indigenous peoples and local communities. These agreed and overarching criteria are still valid and we must keep them in mind and ensure that the new multilateral mechanism and its modalities are well in line with them. Document CBD/WGDSI/2/2 does also provide a good basis for the continuation of the discussion at the second meeting of the working group and towards COP16. Some important aspects and attributes of the mechanism are reflected in these documents. Nevertheless, further details will be required to eventually and successfully operationalize the mechanism based on a COP decision. We are convinced that only a mechanism that is fully multilateral and which does not require any tracking and tracing of DSI or the use of DSI can fulfill the requirements set out in Decision 15/9. Moreover, users of DSI in all countries should be encouraged to contribute to the fund if they generate monetary benefits. A major incentive for users is certainty and legal clarity that must be ensured by the mechanism. If users make contributions to the fund in line with the provisions of the mechanism, their conformity must be confirmed and they must be exempt from any additional benefit sharing claims for the use of DSI. Similar to the contribution coming from users in all countries, in principle, all countries should also be eligible to receive benefits for the purpose of supporting the conservation and sustainable use of biodiversity. In this regard, transparency and accountability of the use of funds are further important incentives for users to participate and contribute to the fund. With the elements, we are aiming at a multilateral mechanism that will be effective in supporting the conservation and sustainable use of biodiversity and promoting the successful implementation of the Kunming-Montreal Global Biodiversity Framework. The timeline of the process until COP16 has been highly ambitious from the outset given the numerous issues at hand. Despite the broad intercessional activities with less than three months to go, there is still a lot of work in front of us. We, members of the CHSCANS group, are committed to using the time in Montreal to work with everyone, including the parties, governments, indigenous peoples and local communities, civil society, academia, women, youth, the private sector and others in order to advance the work the most productive way to reach the best possible outcome in preparation of COP16. CHSCANS looks forward to fruitful discussions in the upcoming days here in Montreal. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
The floor to Cuba followed by the EU. Cuba.
The statement is made on behalf of the group of Latin American Caribbean countries. As we convene for this second meeting of the Working Group on Digital Sequence Information ahead of COP16 of the Convention on Biological Diversity, we would like to express our gratitude to the People's Republic of China, Presidency of COP16, for their leadership and to Canada for hosting this meeting. As we embark on this discussion, Grula wished to share our views on several substantive matters. First. First, GRULA approach this week negotiation with the understanding that nothing is agreed until everything is agreed. We need to have a comprehensive understanding of how the mechanism will work, and only then we will be able to proceed to endorse individual elements. While our region accepts to start our discussion basing on the elements for the draft decision proposed by the co-chair, we recognise at the same time that we may need to consider alternative proposals and that there are many aspects that need to be modified for the development and improve. GRULA actually referenced the important decision fixing slash nine on digital sequence information. The agreements reached therein will serve as a cornerstone for the development of the multilateral mechanism decided at COP16. We urge parties to not depart from the agreements contained within this decision and instead work toward development the multilateral mechanism in the spirit of compromise. In developing this multilateral mechanism, GRULA underlies the need to ensure compatibility with national access and benefit sharing legislation. In our region, national regulation is and will remain fundamental in ensuring that benefits derived from the use of genetic resources, including in many cases DSI, are fairly and equitably shared. GRULA further emphasised that the mechanism should be mutually supported of other existing instruments, including the Nagoya Protocol. Compatibility with and recognition of the specificity of the planned treaty and the various ABS agreements under World Health Organisation as well WIPO are critical for our region. GRULA also underscored the differentiated responsibility between developed and developing countries as recognised in the convention. These differences should be reflected across all elements of the mechanism, including trigger points that require payment from users of developed countries and disbursement criteria that direct funds to developing nations. Technological transfer and capacity building are critical components in this regard, ensuring that the developing world has the tools they need to fully implement the search objective of the convention. We believe that we should continue explaining other elements that are relevant to the subject, among which we highlight the use of artificial intelligence, both as a user and as developer and generator of information. However, let us be clear, funds collected and dispersed through the mechanism should not replace the obligation of developed countries to allocate its public funds to fulfil their obligation immobilising resources for the implementation of the convention. Lastly, it is vital that stakeholders from all sectors are integral to this process. We acknowledge that the interests of these groups are relevant and their voices must be reflected in the outcome of our discussion. As one of the most biodiverse regions on the planet, GRULA expect that the outcomes of this discussion will lead to a framework where the benefits from our region outweigh the burden imposed. In closing, GRULA remains committed to constructive dialogue and collaboration as we work toward the operationalisation of a benefit sharing mechanism for DSI. We look forward to engage with all parties in the spirit of cooperation and mutual respect. Thank you.
I have the European Union. Thank you.
Union and its member states. First of all, I would like to thank Canada for its great hospitality and for hosting this meeting in this beautiful city of Montreal. The European Union and its member states acknowledge that progress to develop the modalities to operationalise the multilateral mechanisms for benefit sharing from digital sequence information was made. We thank the CBD Secretariat and also the co-chairs of the Working Group for the work done and for preparing the documents for this meeting and published them in time. That said, the European Union and its member states acknowledge that several aspects remain to be clarified, and the second meeting of the Open-Ended Working Group on DSI is quite a challenging task ahead. In this regard, we take note of the CBD studies to contribute to identify the options which may most likely meet the principles and criteria listed under paragraph nine and ten of CBD COP Decision 15-9. While we recognise the challenges faced by the experts to analyse options that are not fully developed, we expected the studies to provide a more solid scrutiny of the triggers to generate benefits and of the relevant sectors using DSI. This unfortunately poses a challenge to take well-informed decisions on several aspects, including those related to the implementation and identification of users who should share monetary benefits. The EU and its member states would like to recall the importance for modalities of the multilateral mechanism to be in line with the principles and criteria laid down under paragraphs nine and ten of Decision 15-9. Whilst additional discussion on triggers is needed, the EU and its member states deem that options based on triggers tackling commercial activities have more potential than options addressing access to meet the principles and criteria under Decision 15-9. We believe that such options would not hamper open access nor affect research and innovation policies and practices. They could be simpler and more practical to implement, making them also more cost-efficient. Therefore, we consider the synthesis document CBD/WGDSI/2/2 prepared by the co-chairs a good basis for further discussion and appreciate the efforts of the co-chairs to narrow down the options for triggers. Considering the limited time between Open-Ended Working Group II and COP16, we believe it is necessary to focus the discussion and work on these two options. To ensure legal clarity and meet criteria of simplicity, the EU and its member states think that one single trigger to share monetary benefits should be identified. It is important to ensure a level playing field for all users worldwide and to ensure that the multilateral mechanism establishes a meaningful, fair and predictable disbursement of funds for all parties in line with the disbursement criteria that will have to be agreed upon by parties at COP16. The EU and its member states would like to reiterate the importance for the DSI fund to be able to receive direct contributions from the private sector as well as to ensure direct access to funding by IPLCs in all countries. Both aspects should be part of the operational modalities of the mechanism and its fund. Furthermore, we believe that we should avoid a proliferation of funds and minimise the costs of management and implementation. In this regard, we look forward to the outcome of the discussions that will take place next week in the Advisory Committee on Resource Mobilisation, on possible hosts for the DSI fund according to its mandate and based on the outcomes and criteria put forward by this meeting. We look in particular forward to any clarification by the JF on how to address this. That said, the EU and its member states support the proposal that the COP decision should ask parties to refrain from putting in place national measures, and the proliferation of national measures on benefit sharing from DSI would undermine the success of the multilateral mechanism. In addition, the COP decision should clarify the relationship between existing ABS frameworks covering DSI and the multilateral mechanism. We believe it is important that this COP decision will be clear in creating strong commitments regarding implementation by parties and benefit sharing by users. We believe that the modalities for sharing monetary benefits should be specific and combined with the call to users to apply them. The decision should also contain sufficient clarity for the users to be able to identify themselves as such. Modalities to acknowledge users' fulfilment of monetary benefit sharing should also be included in order to promote legal certainty for providers and users of DSI. Finally, the modalities to make the multilateral mechanism operational should also be flexible enough for other ABS international instruments to join if they deem it appropriate or to operate in harmony with the multilateral mechanism. This would ensure mutual supportiveness, legal clarity, avoid doubling payment obligations and too much fragmentation amongst DSI benefit sharing systems. Bearing in mind the time-bound process established by COP Decision 15-9, the EU and its member states are committed to contribute to progress on outstanding issues that require additional discussion, such as the identification of adequate trigger for monetary benefit sharing and criteria to identify those users who should share such benefits in order to provide a solid basis for discussion at COP16. We look forward to engaging in constructive discussion in the following days. Thank you.
That concludes our list of parties speaking on behalf of regions. I do see a request for the floor from IPLCs, which I will come to later. We'll follow our normal pattern, and next we will hear from parties. You will have three minutes, and I have a long list already, which is great. It's good to get to work. Egypt, you have the floor.
...information and strongly support the collective call for a fair and equitable benefit sharing mechanism that addresses the unique need and challenges of developing countries. In this context, we wish to emphasise the following points. One, the establishment of DSI database under the CBD. Egypt underscores the urgent need for a centralised DSI database within the framework of the Convention on Biological Diversity as a part of the clearinghouse mechanism. Such a database is crucial for the effective monitoring of DSI access, facilitating the appropriate sharing of information and supporting non-monetary benefit sharing measures, including capacity building and technology transfer. This step is essential to ensure that all parties, especially developing countries, can participate fully and equitably in the benefit derived from DSI. On the protection of traditional knowledge and DSI, Egypt emphasises the importance of distinguishing between access to DSI and DSI associated with traditional knowledge. Protecting the right of indigenous and local communities is paramount, and we advocate for databases to clearly reflect legal access to both DSI and traditional knowledge. In instances where traditional knowledge is involved, we strongly support the establishment of bilateral agreement with the country of origin to safeguard the right of indigenous community. Thirdly, on governance and compliance, Egypt highlights the necessity of a robust governance structure to ensure compliance with DSI framework. It's imperative that DSI activity respect national sovereignty and contribute to the broader objective of the conservation of biodiversity and sustainable use. Additionally, we emphasise the critical role of capacity building and technology transfer in ensuring that all parties' particular resource in developing regions has the necessary tools and knowledge to benefit from DSI. Also, on the issue of financial mechanisms, Egypt advocates the establishment of an inclusive biodiversity financial mechanism that reports directly to the CBD Conference of the Party COP. The mechanism would manage the DSI fund and promote cooperation among parties, ultimately serving as a primary financial mechanism under the CBD. While the establishment of such structure is crucial for the success of the DSI framework, we must not delay our effort to advance benefit sharing from DSI in the entry. Finally, Mr Chair, Egypt remain committed to working closely with our negotiating partner to develop a comprehensive and equitable DSI framework that upholds the right and interest of all stakeholders. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Next on my list, I have Serbia, Switzerland and Brazil. Serbia, you have the floor.
We wish to express our appreciation to the hard work done so far on DSI, including the work done by co-chairs and secretariat on the elements of multilateral mechanism identified by the Working Group in its first meeting and taking into account, into consideration the outcomes of inter-sessional activities and work accomplished on studies commissioned pursuant to Decision 15-9. This inter-sessional period brought us significant progress in mutual understanding of the relevant issues. Like many times before, Serbia strongly supports principles of open science while recognising that open access requires consideration of ownership and sustainability of open access infrastructure. We advocate that modalities of the multilateral mechanism be simple and not affect open access to data and ensure legal clarity and certainty. We call on parties to stick to the approach we agreed on COP15, that the benefit sharing mechanism should be multilateral and the obligation under such mechanism for benefit sharing from the use of DSI apply to all users of DSI without any criteria relating to the countries where the users are located. As regards the fund for DSI, instead of certain proposals that it is necessary to establish a new standalone fund, we are of the view that the Global Biodiversity Framework Fund that is being established by the JF would be the best solution to accommodate the DSI fund. Further development of the multilateral mechanism for benefit sharing from the use of DSI, including a global fund, will not be easy, but it's obvious that after the successful negotiation of the previous two years, we are more than ready to adopt a pragmatic approach and finish it successfully. We will make more detailed comments in the upcoming discussions on the contact groups and looking forward to fruitful work over the next days. Thank you, Mr Co-chair.
Next, I have Switzerland, Brazil and Japan. Switzerland.
Switzerland would like to reiterate its commitment to the development of a benefit sharing mechanism for the use of DSI, which is purely multilateral and which fulfils the agreed and overarching criteria of paragraph nine and ten of Decision 15-9. The elements in document CBD/WGDSI/2/2 provide a good basis for the work towards a decision at COP16. However, as a COP decision is not legally binding, it cannot introduce any legal obligations for parties or users of DSI. Therefore, wording such as requirement must be replaced by encouragement or invitation. In turn, strong incentives are needed to achieve broad participation. A major incentive for users of DSI that contribute to the fund will be legal certainty provided by a confirmation that they fulfil the benefit sharing provisions and that they will not be subject to any other benefit sharing claims for the use of DSI. Moreover, the involvement of relevant stakeholders in the development of the mechanism is crucial in order to ensure the eventual participation in the mechanism. Regarding the contributions to the fund, a combination of elements of options A and B may be most promising. Most importantly, to create a level playing field, users of DSI in all countries should be encouraged to contribute to the fund if they generate benefits. We favour a simple approach that is, that fully decouples benefit sharing from access and use of specific DSI. Users should not be identified through particular products, as this would likely require tracking and tracing. Instead, users of DSI could be identified through a process of self-identification, for example, based on periodic surveys. To achieve a fair approach, the contributions should be at least roughly in proportion to the benefits generated. But further clarification regarding the approach based on a percentage as well as the term revenue and to whether it would apply to products or a company is required. Regarding the disbursement of funds, in principle, all parties should be eligible to receive benefits which must be used for the conservation and sustainable use of biodiversity. Transparency and accountability are important incentives for the effective implementation of the multilateral mechanism. In our view, project-based disbursement is most promising to direct funds towards its use to where they have a positive impact on biodiversity. use to where they have a positive impact on biodiversity. The associated processes should be as simple and efficient as possible by using synergies and existing institutions. Finally, discussions on DSI are ongoing in other fora as well, and coordination and collaboration with these other fora and international ABS instruments are important. This will ensure coherence, mutual supportiveness, and the use of synergies among instruments, and avoid any double payments. We will submit our comments and amendments in writing. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed, Switzerland. Brazil, Japan, and then India. Brazil.
...the statement made by Cuba on behalf of Groelock. As we resume this negotiation, Brazil believes that we must all be humble and open-minded. DSI covers many very complex topics, and no single person, no country, no organization has all the answers to the many questions before us. I would like to highlight some of the general positions of my country regarding some of the items, but there are a lot of items on the agenda, so we will make further comments or more detailed comments as we go on. But just to highlight the main points. Regarding triggers, Brazil believes that the commercialization of DSI-based products is the most desirable trigger for guiding further negotiations, as most countries have adopted a product-based approach across national ABS regimes. However, restricting the trigger solely to products may be insufficient; the provision of services should also be considered. We do acknowledge the need to improve the understanding of different concepts, including how DSI is used for value addition to products and services across different value chains. Concerning the options for dispersment of funds, in Brazil favors the option of direct allocation of funds to countries according to a predetermined formula. This option could strengthen the implementation of medium- and long-term environmental policies by ensuring a steady flow of resources. It would also drastically reduce the administrative cost of the project-based allocation methodology, which would depend on heavy bureaucratic structures from most multilateral funds. We are also convinced that a direct allocation system could enhance the sense of ownership of recipient countries by allowing countries to allocate resources on a demand-driven basis. We further believe we should strive to reshuffle the discussion on the interlinkages between the multilateral mechanism and the national ABS systems. At this point in time, we fear that most arguments that have been raised seem to assume that multilateral mechanisms and national systems are mutually exclusive. This downplays the significant efforts of different countries to develop robust national legislation and innovative solutions many countries have developed to address relevant challenges. Therefore, we should prioritize the identification of modalities to harmonize both approaches. There is also an urgent need to substantially increase capacity development and technology transfer to improve the capacities for the use of DSI in developing countries. Due attention must be paid to the needs of developing country parties regarding the capabilities to generate, produce, and benefit from DSI. From our perspective, the benefit-sharing obligations outlined in the Convention and the Nagoya Protocol should not be conflated with or replaced the obligations set out in Articles twenty and twenty-one, which are central to target nineteen eight of the GBF. Given that the JF was designed as an ODA fund, we are highly skeptical of its ability to adapt the specific requirements of ABS regimes. Merging ABS regimes with the obligations of Articles twenty and twenty-one poses a significant risk of diluting the responsibilities of developed countries. Finally, Brazil believes that the benefits shared through the multilateral mechanism should primarily fund the conservation of biodiversity and its sustainable use, especially in the territories of indigenous peoples and local communities, who are responsible for conserving eighty percent of the world's biodiversity. It is essential that indigenous peoples and local communities have their rights respected and have a role commensurate with their importance for the conservation and sustainable use of biodiversity. Thank you.
Brazil. We have Japan, India, and then Uganda. Japan, you have the floor.
...appreciate the effort made by the secretariat and the co-chairs to present us the census information in this addendum, which we found quite productive. Given the non-legally binding nature of COP decisions, as confirmed by the co-chairs and the secretariat, the decision we are going to adopt in October in Cali will be carried out at national level, depending on national circumstances. Also, given the fact that the use of DSI contributes to the conservation and sustainable use of global biodiversity, we need strong international and domestic incentives to facilitate contributions from companies and to secure a predictable level of contributions. Based on this understanding, Japan have submitted our suggestions in writing. In the census document, co-chairs are proposing options on two issues: contribution and dispersment. On contribution, both options use revenue as the basis of calculation with X percent. We need to understand that profit of companies has not been made at the point revenue is generated. This means, under both options, some companies are asked to pay even if they are in deficit. It is unreasonable, especially for companies in research and development-intensive industries, which are likely to raise deficit in the early stage of product development. If we enforce these companies to pay against their deficit, they would stop using DSI. Therefore, we believe the use of revenue needs to be reconsidered. There are wide-ranging industries using DSI, more than the five listed in the enclosure A, whereas industries included in the list, such as cosmetics, rarely use DSI. With respect to X percent, the contribution of DSI greatly differs from product to product. Companies may be using DSI for some of their products, but they may not be using DSI for other products, even within the same company. For these reasons, the level of contribution would need to be flexible, depending on types and size of companies, and that setting numerical percentages would need to be reconsidered. In addition, we need to keep in mind that scientific research has provided priceless foundation of human progress, and scientific research activities should not be hampered. Therefore, databases and academic institutions need to be excluded from the contributors to the global fund. On dispersment, Japan attaches great importance on transparency and accountability. If one company contributes to the global fund and that money is used for something other than biodiversity conservation, the company would be accused by their shareholders and criticized by other stakeholders. Such risks would eventually discourage companies from contributing to the global fund. For the sake of transparency, we support the allocation to be made on a project basis. Also, to ensure fairness and equity in benefit sharing, parties domestically operating bilateral arrangements on DSI should not be able to receive dispersment from the global fund. In order to prevent free riders and incentivized contribution, we strongly suggest certificates to be issued by an international entity operating the global fund to eligible contributors. We have submitted our suggestions in writing on these points as well. What we are going to achieve is the conservation of global biodiversity, and the multilateral mechanism should also be the very system to help us accomplish that ultimate objective through the implementation of the GBF. The conservation of biological diversity is a common concern of humankind, and every one of us needs to play a part. For this reason, the global fund would need to be designed to collect contribution from all sources and operate in a fair and equitable manner to both DSI users and providers. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Japan. Next, I have India, Uganda, and then the United Kingdom. India.
Co-chairs, at the outset, India would like to really appreciate and thank the CBD secretariat, as well as the chair and co-chairs of the adult working group, for steering the deliberations on this complex issue. We would like to thank Canada for its hospitality in hosting us here at Montreal. Number of elements of the multilateral mechanism have been flagged in the document CBD slash WG DSI slash two slash two, which need to be resolved amicably and unanimously for ensuring that the legal administrative framework under the multilateral mechanism is unanimously accepted. While welcoming the multilateral mechanism, it is important to realize that establishing such a mechanism is going to be time-consuming. Parties should have the option to have a national bilateral mechanism for benefit sharing from the use of DSI along with the multilateral mechanism, and with sufficient safeguards to ensure that there are no dual payments on benefit sharing. India advocates open access to DSI databases with features of capturing accurate geographical information during uploading of data, while adhering to the fair and care principles for maintaining such database. A database governance framework in sync with multilateral mechanism, which promotes fair and equitable access and benefit sharing from the use of DSI on genetic resources, also needs to be developed. As regards creation of the global fund and its management, we feel that an independent mechanism to manage funds from the use of DSI under the overall supervision of COP may bring in greater focus, transparency, and accountability in the governance of funds, thereby ensuring scope, speed, and scale in the allocation of resources or benefit sharing under the multilateral mechanism. The contribution to the global fund could be both user-based and/or product-sector-based for maximizing the contribution to the global fund. The non-monetary benefits should complement and not replace monetary contributions. The framework for dispersment or allocations from out of the global fund needs to respect each country's national circumstances as per its national legislative framework as laid down in Article fifteen one of the Convention on Biodiversity. The allocation of resources from the fund should be direct and on the basis of biodiversity richness of the country, leaving it to the respective countries to draw up their own capacity-building plan out of the funds allocated. The allocation for indigenous people and local communities should be part of the capacity-building plan drawn by the countries themselves as per their own national circumstances in legislation, rather than factoring the same in the allocation process, as has been suggested in the draft document. India advocates channelizing of funds to such stakeholders through the competent national authority and as per the national legislation, as has been laid down in Para seven of Section C of the KMGBF document, as per CBD slash COP slash decision slash fifteen slash four. India believes that a robust administrative mechanism, including a dispute resolution mechanism, should be put in place to effectively address and resolve conflicts that may arise, ensuring fair and equitable management of DSI-related issues. I would end by drawing attention to the recent UNIA resolution adopted unanimously on first March this year on sustainable lifestyle sponsored by India on the principles of mission life or lifestyle for environment. It is our collective responsibility to promote sustainable consumption and production of our rich resources. It is only appropriate then that the access and benefit-sharing mechanism on the use of DSI and genetic resources must ultimately lead to the fulfillment of the three cardinal principles of the Convention on Biodiversity, that is, conservation of biodiversity, sustainable use of its components, and fair and equitable sharing of access and benefit sharing arising from the use of genetic resources. Thank you.
Thank you, India. Next, we have Uganda, the United Kingdom, and Canada. Uganda, you have the floor.
Thank you, Co-Chair. Uganda would like to express her sincere appreciation to the secretariat and the co-chairs for their dedicated efforts in steering the discussions of the working group. For us, the multilateral mechanism represents a positive path towards achieving equitable benefit sharing from the use of DSI on genetic resources. Uganda aligns herself with the position of the African group as presented by Senegal. We are supportive of allowing flexibility in how contributions to the global fund are made, whether directly or through relevant national authorities. We are committed to supporting allocations of funding that will primarily realize the objectives of the Convention, while prioritizing local needs, particularly those of indigenous peoples and local communities. However, we emphasize the necessity for stringent oversight frameworks to effectively monitor the performance of the multilateral mechanism, including the global fund, which will help maintain confidence and contribute towards the goals of the fund and the mechanism. Additionally, Uganda strongly supports the sharing of non-monetary benefits, including knowledge transfer, technical and scientific cooperation, and capacity building. In terms of public databases, Uganda believes that entities operating public databases should be obligated to decimate information about the multilateral mechanism, to promote accountability, and facilitate a thorough understanding among all users of their responsibilities regarding fair benefit sharing practices. Uganda supports the inclusion of relevant passport or metadata in databases as an enabler to benefit sharing. In support of the statement by Egypt, we also propose that during the review period of the mechanism, modalities be explored for the creation of a DSI database under the full authority of the CBD. Finally, given the very rapid advances in science and technology, Uganda proposes that appropriate consideration be taken to future-proof the multilateral mechanism against emerging approaches such as artificial intelligence. Uganda reiterates our commitment to constructive engagement in discussions regarding the multilateral mechanism and the global fund. We look forward to collaborating with all parties to build an equitable and effective system that contributes meaningfully to the objectives of the Convention, and supports the sustainable management of global biodiversity resources. A detailed statement will be submitted to the secretariat. Thank you, Chair.
Next, we have the United Kingdom, Canada, and Jordan. UK, you have the floor.
Co-Chair, the UK would like to thank the secretariat, the co-chairs, for the papers presented to the working group on DSI, which we think are a good basis for discussion. We still believe that the multilateral benefit-sharing mechanism, including a global fund, as agreed and established by parties at COP fifteen, provides a win-win scenario for users of DSI and biodiversity. It can ensure DSI remains publicly accessible through existing open-access databases while securing sustainable flows of finance for nature from the private sector. Chair, we have come a long way in our discussions, and for the UK, it is important that we do not lose sight of the criteria agreed by parties in decision fifteen nine, and that those remain the foundation of the multilateral benefit-sharing mechanism. For example, we have agreed the mechanism should be feasible and practical, and in that sense, payments by businesses should be proportionate, reasonable, and sustainable. We should seek an outcome that facilitates and supports implementation across parties, which creates a level playing field that businesses have called for, and which avoids obligation stacking, such as through implementation of national bilateral measures on DSI. Furthermore, the mechanism should be designed in a way that allows it to meet future needs, including potential coordination with other benefit-sharing processes. On the papers themselves, and specifically the annex of two slash two, we would like to share some brief reflections. The UK underlines the importance of transparency in how the funds are used and the need to have a clear reporting process. This should be further explored and defined. Non-monetary benefit sharing is also an important part in the mechanism and should be clearly reflected with additional detail, including, for example, recognition of where non-monetary benefits have been shared. We would welcome the opportunity to discuss this element in more detail. The annex helpfully presents two options within paragraph two and paragraph twelve. On paragraph two, option A appears harder to implement. For example, any list of products would become quickly outdated. Option B may be more efficient, feasible, and practical, but we have some suggestions of how it may be simplified, including by making any list of sectors indicative. On paragraph twelve, we see there are advantages and disadvantages of both approaches. Through an initial high-level assessment, the automatic allocation approach, option B, appears to have fewer administrative burdens, and it could be applied more quickly. Transparency on the use of funds would be central to option B being a success. We look forward to working closely with parties, non-parties, IPLC representatives, and stakeholders over the coming days to refine a draft recommendation for COP. Thank you, Chair.
UK. Next, we'll hear from Canada, Jordan, and Yemen. Canada, you have the floor.
Good to see you all here in Montreal again. Colleagues, the last time we were gathered in this city with rather different weather, we agreed to establish a multilateral mechanism for the fair and equitable sharing of benefits from the use of DSI. Since that time, we've built greater understanding and we thank the Co-Chairs for their concerted work to help find common ground for a path forward. In particular, Canada commends the approach taken by the Co-Chairs and considers the document two slash two and the proposed elements offer a good basis for our discussions this week. Canada agrees with operationalizing the mechanism under a COP decision. However, we must be careful about using prescriptive language in a COP decision that creates false expectations of a mandatory instrument. We appreciate the distinction between users that generate revenue and profit and those that use DSI on a nonprofit basis. Canada agrees that the former are the ones who can be strongly encouraged to contribute to the DSI fund, though of course, any others may contribute as well. On Paragraph two on contributions, we consider options A and B provide helpful starting points and both avoid tracking and tracing and they might help us to continue not to define DSI. However, we must bear in mind that the more prescriptive the elements, the more important it will be to find agreement on the scope of DSI and DSI use. In option A, we find the lack of common understanding of how DSI contributes to a product and variation between products problematic and we note that not all countries have a specific process for placing a product on the market. So we preliminarily favor option B, but there we're concerned about the overbroad application to whole sectors when some companies within may not use biodiversity DSI at all and the selection of such sectors. We also see the risk of double payments under other ABS instruments. We consider that more discussion will be needed to fine-tune this option. For both options, we're not ready to specify a set percentage of revenue. On Paragraph twelve on disbursement, Canada's priority is that funds should be used to support biodiversity conservation and sustainable use. Our general preference is for option A, a project-based approach to ensure transparency and accountability. If we go to option B, in our view, any formula should also incentivize the contribution of data to databases. Canada considers that the multilateral mechanism should be accessible to providers and users wherever they are found, in all countries and with a needs-based approach. In particular, the fund should be accessible to indigenous peoples from all countries. On the enclosures, we look forward to sharing our views as discussions go forwards, but to conclude, incentives are the means to make the mechanism. So let's focus on a practical, timely approach with irresistible incentives to gather maximum participation of users across the globe. Thank you, Co-Chair.
Canada, the weather is indeed better than it was, though it's been quite wet. I had to buy an umbrella. Next on the list, Jordan, Yemen and Guatemala. Jordan, you have the floor.
Thank you, President. Perhaps I should say Canada. We have done a great job of thanking the government of Canada. We have also done a great job of ensuring the health of the country. The president has also made a clear statement about how to handle the situation. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country.
Next, we'll hear from Yemen, Guatemala and South Africa. Yemen, you have the floor.
At the beginning, we have done a great job of thanking Canada for its kindness and its support. We have also done a great job of thanking the Secretary for the good preparation of this meeting. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country. We have also made a clear statement about how to protect the country.
Thank you very much indeed, Yemen. Next on the list, we have Guatemala, followed by South Africa and then the Democratic Republic of Congo. Guatemala.
Guatemala supports the African regional statement and would like to extend our sincere gratitude to the organizers of this meeting and express our appreciation for all the hard work and sincere efforts to the Co-Chairs in conducting the intercessional work and developing the proposed elements for further development and operationalization of the multilateral mechanism. South Africa is a mega-biodiverse country, is home to significant proportion of the world's biodiversity, which not only sustains our ecosystems but also underpins the livelihoods of millions of our people. We therefore emphasize the African statement that the conservation and sustainable use of biodiversity alongside the fair and equitable sharing of benefits arising from the use of genetic resources are central to our development agenda. South Africa believes strongly in the fair and equitable sharing of benefits arising from the use of DSI in line with the principles of the Convention on Biological Diversity and the Nagoya Protocol and therefore we believe in a fair and equitable benefit sharing mechanism. South Africa remains aligned to the African proposal of a one percent levy on the retail value of biodiversity-related products as it presents the most cost-effective option to implement. South Africa then calls for this to be a third option to the options presented by the Co-Chairs for the contribution to the global fund and remains on the agenda. We further emphasize the importance of non-monetary benefits. We need to enhance the capacity globally to conserve and sustainably use biodiversity. Monetary benefits cannot entirely ensure this and therefore we cannot compromise on building capacity to generate, store and utilize DSI in all countries. Then, South Africa appeals for a transparent and inclusive governance structure for the benefit sharing mechanism and as such, we propose a governing body inclusive of all participating parties to govern the operations of the multilateral mechanism and the global fund and the cooperation and collaboration between parties for effective implementation as well as clear guidelines for the monitoring and reporting of DSI use as well as the management and the disbursement of funds. South Africa with its rich biodiversity is home to a wealth of traditional knowledge associated with genetic resources and therefore DSI. We therefore strongly advocate for the protection of the rights of indigenous people and local communities. Any access to DSI that includes traditional knowledge should be subject to prior informed consent and mutually agreed terms. We hope that this meeting will pave the way for a framework that considerably conserves biodiversity and equally so generates benefits from its use that can be shared fairly and equitably. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, South Africa. Next, we'll hear from the Democratic Republic of Congo, Kenya and then Esuatini, Democratic Republic of Congo.
Mr. President, I would like to speak freely. The Republic of Congo is a very generous country in terms of its governance. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication. It is also very generous in terms of its communication.
Mr. President, the 1% contribution at sales as highlighted by Senegal shall go a long way to fulfilling this objective in all our African countries, including the kingdom, if this is well implemented. Mr. President, the Kingdom of Esuatini wants to further emphasize on the need to assist developing countries on capacity building, technology, and technical needs since most of our countries are still catching up on the subject of DSI and lack the necessary resources to advance it. Mr. President, Esuatini supports the creation of a CBT-managed DSI database, which we hope will improve tracking and reporting on all accessed and used DSI. Esuatini also supports the establishment of an inclusive and transparent governance structure of the multilateral mechanism to benefit conservation of biodiversity and improving the well-being of our peoples. Thank you, Mr. President.
Esuatini. We have Uruguay, the United Arab Emirates, and then Norway. So Uruguay, you have the floor.
Yes. Uruguay supports the intervention made by Cuba in the name of Grulak and appreciates the valuable work of the conductors and collaborators in the generation of information, evaluation of alternatives, presentation of proposals, and identification of convergence and topics to deliberate about. In a brief summary, we consider that a neurological definition of contributors is the definition of contributors to define the points of activation of the requirement of participation in the monetary benefits. In this context, our position will accompany those who consider the no-affectation of small and medium-sized users' generators of scientific and technological knowledge. Regarding the reimbursement, we support the direct funding model, always based on formulas that guarantee a just and equitable distribution, noting, by the way, that the non-monetary benefits do not have to replace the monetary benefits. As regards adoption of regulatory measures, we will pay special consideration to the implementation of the multilateral proposed mechanism to be harmonizable and compatible with the national legal standards. On the other hand, we consider it very important to consensua with operators of databases of data the obligations of identification of origin and mechanism of traceability of the sequences there deposited, as well as establish efforts to harmonize with other international agreements and instruments. We understand that we are facing a complex and ambitious work that constitutes a challenge for many parts. In this context, we reiterate the necessity that the results of the upcoming discussions related to the implementation of the multilateral mechanism guarantee a just and equitable distribution of the data, transparent and viable in its implementation, adjusting to the objectives of the CDB and the national standards, considering especially the participation in the benefits of countries in development, both monetary benefits and the strengthening of scientific and technological capabilities as a driver of development and conservation of biodiversity.
Next, we have the United Arab Emirates, excuse me, and then Norway and Peru. United Arab Emirates.
First, we thank the Canadian Government for its good cooperation and our president and partners for ensuring the agreement on their commitment to the gathering of meetings. As we know, we see progress in the expansion of the large numbers of the countries to accommodate the agreement on using electronic data for the environmental protection and our partners in accomplishing this progress. The United Nations believes that achieving a precise balance between the research and negotiation and the protection of the environmental resources is essential. That the use of electronic data in a formal manner is responsible and is to accommodate it all, to ensure that all access to these materials is controlled and protected. We also believe in the importance of comprehensive and comprehensive development, taking into account the needs of the original peoples and the local communities, and raising the national capabilities and supporting the negotiation in different segments. We also believe in the importance that the global systems are compatible and equitable in achieving the agreements without imposing any restrictions on the stakeholders, the companies, and the individuals, the general and the medium-sized ones. At the end, we look to the thorough discussions to accomplish our common objectives and to promote the international protection of the biodiversity. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Next, we'll hear from Norway, Peru, and Zimbabwe. Norway, you have the floor.
Mr. Co-Chair, first, the fund must be able to make a significant contribution to conservation and sustainable use in countries that lack capacity for nature protection. This can be based on performance criteria. We want indigenous peoples and local communities to be the main recipients of benefits because they are the best stewards of biodiversity. Second, for Norway, it is important to find pragmatic solutions that do not negatively affect the innovation system and that do not entail negative consequences for research, innovation, public health, and food safety, and that no extensive bureaucratic system is implemented, which in any case will not generate substantial income. Third, the mechanism must be geared towards contributions from the private sector and not from states. At the same time, the fund may be open to contribution from states. In our view, the suggested elements for recommendation from the co-chairs align with the directional travel that we have heard in the meetings of the IG and also from informal meetings. There is still more work ahead of us, which the suggested options show. Regarding the options, first on money into the fund and the trigger point, triggers needs to be commercial. We have asked for numbers and there are some rough numbers in the trigger study. However, there is a need for more granulated information, among other things, on numbers relating to revenue/turnover and profit based on DSI from the various sectors. This is important if we are to set a numerical target on contributions to target 19 in the KMGBF. It is an open question how the multilateral mechanism will relate to other instruments for benefit sharing. Regarding money out of the fund, the main question is whether the GBFF is the DSI fund or to have a standalone fund. There are arguments on both sides. We would like to point out that the GBFF is operational, and if speed is important, this speaks in favor of GBFF and to establish a DSI program area, which is an option based on the establishment document of the fund. The arrangements here could be non-permanent and flexible enough to encompass a pilot approach. Thank you, Mr. Co-Chair.
Thank you very much indeed Norway. And next we'll hear from Peru, Zimbabwe, and Malawi. Peru, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Peru considers that genetic information is sequenced and deposited in open databases and that it could be linked to traditional knowledge as an intrinsic part of the genetic resources. Therefore, access and utilization of digital sequences should comply with the national standards that regulate them. In this context, the multilateral mechanism should operate in accordance with the Nagoya Protocol that is currently implemented by Peru and other countries, without violating the national laws on access and distribution of benefits derived from the use of genetic resources, recognized in the 15-9 and Article 15.1 of the Convention. We understand that there are technical difficulties related to the geographic information of digital sequences and we value the efforts of the public databases to include this data as a requirement at the time of depositing a sequence. However, it is also necessary to request documents that verify or support the legal access to biological or genetic material where the sequence was obtained. Peru acknowledges the importance of digital sequences in scientific investigation and the generation of knowledge for the conservation of biodiversity. Therefore, it is important to define with clarity the points of activation that ensure a substantial and predictable increase in monetary benefits, avoiding creating barriers for investigators of countries in development. Finally, Peru considers it essential to close the existing breaches in the biodiversity countries regarding generation, access, analysis, utilization, and storage of digital sequences through a greater development of capacities and transparency technology. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much indeed. Colleagues, we're making good progress. A polite reminder from our interpreters to upload your statements in good time, preferably ahead of reading them out. It massively facilitates interpretation. And then do bear in mind as well that you're being interpreted, so speak nice and slowly. It's a reminder to myself as well. Next on the list, we'll hear from Zimbabwe, Malawi, and China. Zimbabwe, you have the floor.
Zimbabwe congratulates this ad hoc working group on DSI for their fruitful work and particularly congratulates the co-chairs for their leadership as we move towards the development of the multilateral mechanism for benefit sharing from the use of digital sequence information. Zimbabwe would like to align itself to the statement made by Senegal on behalf of the Africa Group. Zimbabwe looks forward to the operationalization of the multilateral mechanism. While we appreciate the many complexities that have to be navigated to develop a mechanism that is simple, feasible, sustainable, and legally clear, and although we are fully supportive of flexibility, we would like to reiterate the need for fairness and equity, and true equity in sharing benefits that arise from the use of DSI from genetic resources. Achieving this requires an acknowledgement of pre-existing inequities, and as such, the modalities of this mechanism should take into consideration the unique circumstances of developing countries and the needs for capacity building, knowledge sharing, and technology transfer, especially in considering the options for displacement of funds. Zimbabwe is committed to the process of the operationalization of this mechanism and looks forward to fruitful discussions in the following week. Thank you.
Zimbabwe. We have Malawi, China, and Sri Lanka. Malawi, you have the floor.
Mr. Co-Chair, Malawi supports the statement made by Senegal on behalf of Africa and reiterates its commitment towards making the multilateral benefit-sharing mechanism operational by COP16 in its totality. We see this as an opportunity to restore the trust between the providers and users and as an opportunity for mobilizing additional resources for biodiversity conservation and sustainable use. For Malawi, we are happy to work on the basis of the document 2/2 and look forward to further engagements on moving the elements forward in the committee of the hall and any contact group that may arise. We are aware that we already have the decision 15/9, which sets a basis for our work and also a criteria for moving forward, and we are ready to take some step further to move the decision forward. On the elements of the draft recommendation, we would like to make the following comments. One, on paragraph two, we are ready to explore the options further to identify an approach that is simple and feasible, and we also note the need for determining the overall intended scale of the fund to enable the percentage of contribution to be determined. Two, with regards to paragraph 12 on displacement, we are happy to continue working on the basis of option B. That will allow direct displacement to countries, and we are happy to engage in further discussion on the formula for allocation, to allow the level of development of a country, fairness, and equity to be the principles on which displacements are made. With this option, we however would want to emphasize on the need for reporting obligations on parties to ensure that utilization of mobilized resources is in line with paragraph 10 of the draft recommendation and also in line with decision 15/9 to ensure that it is used for conservation and sustainable use of biodiversity. Three, with regards to paragraph 14, we appreciate the thinking behind this recommendation, but we note that the paragraph can be improved by focusing on encouraging parties to put in place national measures that align with multilateral mechanism and that recognize the multilateral mechanism as the mechanism for sharing of benefits arising from the use of DSI available in databases. Finally, we look forward to engaging in further discussions this week. Thank you, Co-Chair.
Thank you very much, Malawi. Going to hear from China, Sri Lanka, and Colombia. China, you have the floor.
Thank you, General Secretary. Thank you, every colleague, for your hard work. In the limited time available, we have prepared all the documents for this meeting and have carefully prepared this meeting. This meeting was the last time in COP16 for all countries to have a formal discussion on DSI. In the coming weeks, our meeting will contribute to the global contribution of DSI and global As we know, due to the level of national development, priority matters, and data resources differences, all countries have different opinions and viewpoints on DSI and global Every time we discuss, we try to find the limited but increasingly diverse consensus. I would like to thank the General Counselors for their professional knowledge, extensive experience, and无私 contribution, to guide us in a more focused and concentrated discussion, thus attracting more consensus. I look forward to the continued work of the General Counselors to further progress in achieving the objectives of COP15. We are cultivating history. Today's world,数字经济 is deeply changing the human经济社会 development, affecting 全球经济贸易,生物多样性保护,公共卫生治理, and human civilization. DSI as the key element of数字经济 is becoming a driving force to achieve innovation, 重塑全球生物多样性治理格局的重要力量, concerning all countries' economic growth, security, and sustainability. The Chinese government calls on all countries to uphold the principle of cooperation and 共享理念, standing on the stance of harmony between humanity and the planet, focusing on the key elements suggested by the General Counselors, working together to create a balanced,面向未来,全球基础性的DSI治理制度建议, to achieve COP15第九号决议 on the final establishment of DSI and global fund in COP18, and to achieve the success of the goals of the COP18 assessment.
Thank you, China. We will hear from Sri Lanka and then Colombia. Sri Lanka, you have the floor.
On behalf of Sri Lanka, I extend our deepest gratitude to the Convention on Biological Diversity Secretariat and the Government of Canada for hosting this important meeting. As an island nation rich in biodiversity, Sri Lanka recognizes Como nación islandesa rica en biodiversidad, Sri Lanka reconoce el valor instintivo de nuestra herencia natural y el papel crítico que juega en nuestra prosperidad económica. Sin embargo, enfrentamos grandes desafíos en la conservación, incluidos la pérdida de hábitat y el cambio climático. Estamos comprometidos con la equitativa y justa divulgación de los beneficios de la utilización de recursos genéticos y de información de secuencias digitales, en línea con el Protocolo Nagoya. Hemos hecho importantes pruebas en las políticas de desarrollo de las naciones para asegurar que los beneficios se divierten con las comunidades que han sido longe de custodios de este conocimiento. A medida que avanzamos, visiblemente un marco robusto que fortalece nuestras estructuras legales e institucionales, mejora la construcción de la capacidad y fortalece las colaboraciones internacionales. Sin embargo, para lograr estos objetivos, requerimos asistencia financiera y técnica. Llamamos a la comunidad internacional a apoyarnos en la construcción de la infraestructura necesaria para manejar DSI y asegurar que los beneficios sean equitativamente distribuidos. Para mejorar la gobernanza y la utilización de la información de secuencias digitales DSI, el CBT debería centrarse en varias áreas clave. Establecer un marco legal claro y vinculador de la legislación para DSI que asegure la justa divulgación de los beneficios con los países de origen y respete el conocimiento tradicional a través de la inclusión de la política de gestión. También invierte en la construcción de la capacidad para los países en desarrollo para fortalecer las asociaciones públicas y privadas para avanzar en la tecnología de gestión de DSI y también vincular los beneficios de DSI directamente a los fondos de conservación y desarrollar herramientas para monitorear y reportar la utilización de DSI para apoyar los objetivos de biodiversidad global. Al abordar estas áreas, el CBT puede fortalecer la gobernanza de DSI promoviendo la justa divulgación de los beneficios y apoyando la biodiversidad global y los esfuerzos de desarrollo sostenible. Sri Lanka sigue comprometido con los principios del CBT y todos los protocolos y esperamos trabajar colaborativamente para asegurar que los beneficios derivados de los recursos genéticos contribuyen a la conservación global de la biodiversidad y el bienestar de todos los seres humanos. Gracias.
Me gustaría traer a Colombia.
Señor Presidente, les presento la iniciación de esta intervención agradeciendo a los copresidentes de este grupo de trabajo por su valioso esfuerzo en la consolidación de los posibles elementos de un mecanismo multilateral de participación en los beneficios que se derivan de la utilización de DSI, los cuales constituyen las bases para las discusiones de esta sesión. Colombia desea aportar a las deliberaciones a partir de las siguientes consideraciones. Frente a la opción A de los puntos de activación de la obligación de contribuir al fondo, cuestionamos la importante carga administrativa nacional que pueda representar, así como la ausencia de una definición de DSI. La opción B representa el riesgo de que las empresas pertenecientes a los sectores determinados, a pesar de no utilizar DSI, sean obligadas a contribuir. Colombia considera que el establecimiento de umbrales frente a los tamaños de las compañías podría ser una opción para contener este riesgo. Adicionalmente, Colombia considera que la determinación de alta dependencia en la utilización de DSI requiere mayor trabajo, así como la lista de los sectores. En cuanto a las opciones de distribución, la asignación directa generaría flujos financieros previsibles y oportunos, al mismo tiempo que evitaría el aumento de la brecha que genera participar en convocatorias por proyectos que demandarían procesos competitivos. Se resalta el reconocimiento a la importante contribución de los pueblos indígenas, afrodescendientes y comunidades locales en el mantenimiento de la diversidad biológica, de manera que puedan beneficiarse de estos recursos, así como la relevancia de definir su participación en la gobernanza de este mecanismo. Con respecto a los beneficios monetarios, es importante recordar que estos provendrán de la utilización de DSI. Por lo tanto, no deben ser incluidos como ayuda oficial al desarrollo ni ninguna otra modalidad de cooperación. Colombia quisiera resaltar con preocupación que tres de los cinco temas establecidos como prioritarios en la primera reunión de este grupo de trabajo no hayan sido desarrollados en los documentos de esta reunión. En particular, primero, los beneficios no monetarios y su importancia en la consolidación de una adecuada transferencia de tecnología y construcción de capacidades para los países en desarrollo. Segundo, la gobernanza del mecanismo, dado su impacto en las discusiones sobre movilización de recursos. Tercero, la necesidad de articulación con otros instrumentos, asunto crucial para la incorporación de este mecanismo en las legislaciones nacionales, así como para la garantía de salvaguardas relacionadas con la debida y transparente competencia en asuntos de comercio internacional. Colombia reitera su compromiso con las deliberaciones de esta semana e invita a las partes a construir sobre lo construido y a explorar alternativas creativas que nos permitan llegar a un resultado tangible durante la COP16. Muchas gracias.
Muchas gracias, Colombia. Amigos, es bueno volver al trabajo, ¿no? Pero creo que tengo que dejarte un poco de almuerzo, lo cual es muy decepcionante. Pero te dejaré un poco de almuerzo. También hay un evento de lado importante que debemos hacer, que se está llevando a cabo en la sala de contacto Grulak, que es la sala 3 del primer piso. Así que por favor, hagan su camino al evento de lado si tienen tiempo. Nearly hemos terminado la lista de las partes. Hay una pequeña cantidad de intervenciones de partido que quedan para escuchar y luego escuchar a los otros participantes en nuestro proceso. Así que simplemente detendremos esta reunión, ya sabes, váyase, disfruta un poco de almuerzo, disfruta el evento de lado y empezaremos de nuevo a las 3 de la tarde. Muchas gracias.